I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Planning Commission of this day. And with that, we'll ask Evan Langdon to give the pledge of allegiance. Seeing that he's not here, we'll have Emily do it.
Turn towards the flag, please, and raise your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Let the record show that Vice Chair Danny Murphy is absent with an excused absence. The rest of the Planning Commissioners are present.
Thank you. We need to consider the minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as noted.
I'll second.
Thank you. That item passes 4-0. Next on the agenda, public comments. Do we have any public speaker slips?
Yes.
Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request-to-speak form available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. With that, Mr. Keith Johannes.
Hello, Commissioners and city staff. Keith Johannes, Dana Point. I wanted, I'm here today to remind you of an invitation that I gave to you last meeting of the webinar that's being held at the Dana Point Historic Society Museum. It's a webinar on can we do that? It's about addressing the Secretary of Interior Standards on rehabilitation of historic properties. And we're losing far too many of our historic properties in Dana Point as we move forward with different kinds of development. And so it's important that the community take a chance, and the entire community is invited to attend this webinar, to learn what the Secretary of Interior Standards are and be able to take a look at that. They're really not as difficult to meet as some would lead you to believe if they get the proper architect and construction companies to do that. I did notice at the meeting, the last meeting or meeting before, that there was note by Commissioner Nelson that we have lost a mid-century modern home in the Monarch Bay area. And there are other homes that we are threatened, that are threatened in Dana Point. And so we want to try to get as much education out there. The Historic Society was not here to come up and stand and oppose those kind of developments, but we would like it to happen within the community, if the community is aware of what history we have here. The Dana Point Historic Society has quite a collection now of the files of Norton Frenall. He was a developer of the Laguna Niguel. And that was Laguna, part of Laguna Niguel that he developed is now part of Dana Point. And that is also one of the most historic portions of that community that has developed. So we're going to be going through some of those things to see what kinds of things are of value and some of those things that may be of value to the city of Laguna Niguel. We'll be turning those things over to them. But again, you're invited, and the public is invited, to attend this webinar tomorrow at 12 noon to 1:30. And anyone that has continuing education credits in the area of architecture or planning or any of those areas, you can apply for those credits. We're taking care of the webinar, but there is an additional fee to apply for the, getting the credits for those continuing education things. So thank you for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would wish to speak on something other than what's on the agenda tonight? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johannes. Consent calendar, there's no items on the consent calendar. Public hearing. Coastal development permit, CDP 18-0003, to permit additions, including a 64-square-foot to an existing single-family dwelling and a 74-foot detached accessory pool bathroom in the rear yard of the single-family developed lot located at 232 Monarch Bay Drive. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Danny Giamorelli will give the staff report. Associate Planner.
Thank you, Ursula. Good evening, Chairman McCann, fellow Commissioners. So the project before you this evening is in addition to an existing single-family dwelling and the placement of a detached pool bathroom in the rear yard located at 232 Monarch Bay Drive. So the subject site is located inside Coastal Commission Permit Jurisdiction area in Dana Point. It's northwest of the intersection of Pacific Coast Highway and Crown Valley, and it's within the residential single-family four zone community of Monarch Bay. The lot's surrounded by homes along the side property lines and across Monarch Bay Drive, and it also backs up to Pacific Coast Highway at the rear, as you can see in this image. So the existing site is currently developed with a 2,100-square-foot home with an attached 584-square-foot garage. There's additional site walls, decorative hardscaping and landscaping. And the home was built in 1964 and follows a mid-century modern architectural styling. This is some additional images provided by the architect. As you can see here, the images mostly are going to be in reference to the backyard where the addition will be done. Pursuant to our local coastal requirements, approval of a coastal development permit is required for an increase in floor area in any amount when the improvements of the structure have previously been exempted, and additionally, the construction of a detached accessory structure. This is as stated in Chapter 9.69 of our coastal development permit section under the exemptions. Therefore, these items are not exempt from a coastal development permit. So the project proposes a partial enclosure of an internal courtyard, which is shown here in red, that results in an addition of 64 square feet to the existing home. The addition, it'll contribute to an enlarged kitchen area, which ties into the existing roof, resulting in an increased gross floor area of 2,164 square feet for the home. With the exception of the enclosure off of the existing courtyard or of the existing courtyard, the floor plan of the home remains relatively unchanged. Additionally, the project proposes a detached accessory pool bathroom type structure in the rear corner of the lot, shown in green. That structure is 72 square feet. It includes a shower, a toilet, and a vanity. So this slide kind of identifies the floor plan. As you can see on the top right of what we just went over, the vanity, the shower, and the toilet. And then, of course, the renderings of showing the pool house here. So the pool bathroom is proposed, as I said, to include everything but a, well, actually, it does just include a toilet, a shower, and a bathroom. I mean, it's just shower and a toilet and a vanity. And it's finished at 10 feet in height and finished in smooth stucco to match the existing home. Additional site improvements currently being reviewed under ministerial building permits not associated with this subject entitlement will include side and rear property line walls, a new pool and spa, patio covers, gas fire table seating area, and barbecue island. The facade of the home is going to be refinished with a new coat of white cream paint, and the installation of drought-tolerant landscaping is also proposed. All improvements blend together to complement the respective mid-century modern architectural styling. As I stated earlier, there's really not much change into this home with the exterior, and then little being changed to the interior. So it will remain with that mid-century modern type look. So staff finds that the proposed addition and detached pool bathroom are both consistent with the basis of approval for a coastal development permit as outlined in their respective sections of the zoning code. Responses supporting the required CDP findings are going to be detailed in your draft Planning Commission resolution. Additionally, the current design has been reviewed and approved by the Monarch Bay Architectural Committee. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving the subject entitlement. And applicant and myself are here to answer any questions. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do my fellow Commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Nelson?
Danny, I've got one question for you. Is the reason the building has no setbacks, the bathroom, is it's accessory structure?
Yeah, that's correct. So our zoning code allows for accessory structures to be located in the rear half of the parcel, provided that they're at least 10 feet from the primary structure and a maximum height of 12 feet. They can be located anywhere within that rear half of the parcel, as long as they meet current CBC California Building Code OCFA five code requirement.
Perfect, okay. So they don't have to adhere to front yard, rear yard, side yard setbacks?
Correct.
Okay. That was it? Thank you.
I'm going to follow on to that. So if that's true, do we really have to require the applicant to survey in their restroom? Because it doesn't seem like it's so close, it's so critical to some setback that somebody couldn't do it simply with a tape measure.
From a zoning and planning perspective, our staff, if there's a, if the structure's located far enough away from the property line, we typically don't require a survey, especially for something like this. What we sometimes will do is require a lighting grade certification for any new structure. But depending on, given the location of this, as long as it's located a minimum of, I believe three feet is what OCFA requires from that property line, then a survey typically would be required.
But I think there's a condition that says that the survey certification is required, and yet I don't see it as being that close to the PL.
No, it's most likely a general condition placed by the Public Works Department, so I'll have to double-check. Unless it's the zoning requirement for zoning verification. That's something I'll look into.
Okay. And then additionally, I see several places in the conditions that there's a soils report required. And I'm wondering if, given the scope of the building permit being so limited, is a soils report really necessary?
It may not be necessary. It's something I can confirm.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions? So with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers that wish to speak on this topic?
No, it's Karen.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for a Commission discussion. I guess I'd like to lead off and say I would, I'm supportive of the project. I think it's a great project. I think they did a beautiful job of incorporating the architecture and continuing and following through. There's several places in the conditions where soils reports are required, which seems unnecessary to me. Additionally, survey certification seems unnecessary to me. So I guess I'd like to see the thing get approved with maybe some flexibility for staff to go back and confirm if those things are really necessary, and if they're not, allow those conditions to be struck. I don't know if we can do that.
I'm not sure. Yep, it's on. Generally, if you're approving it with the conditions that you're looking at right now, usually we would hold the property owner to those conditions, but the city does have some discretion to modify those if it wants to. Generally, that would have to come before the Planning Commission again.
I was just going to jump in with a possible solution, which is leave the existing conditions in place. With regard to the survey and the soils, we could defer if deemed necessary by the Community Development Director. That way, we can verify with the engineering staff to confirm there's not a provision we're not aware of from a zoning perspective. But it's likely the case we could waive those conditions once we verify with them.
Okay. I'd be supportive of that solution. Those are my comments. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have no concerns with this project whatsoever. I think it's perfectly cited, fits in our general plans, in the local coastal plan, it's an accessory building. I'm not opposed to your condition, but I wonder if we're getting too far into the weeds, given that they have to put a pool out there, so you know they're going to be surveying for the pool. I'm guessing they have a soils report, and then we just, conditions let staff ultimately make the call what's necessary to have a safe development. But in any case, I'm fully supportive of the project, so.
Commissioner Donner?
I concur. I see major property improvements. The seven requirements for coastal development permit have been met, and the Homeowner Association has approved it, so I'm favorably disposed towards the project. I think it's a good project.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Pol? Okay. Well, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve CDP 18-003 to permit additions, including 64 square feet to an existing single-family dwelling and a 74-square-foot detached accessory pool bathroom in the rear yard of the single-family developed lot located at 232 Monarch Bay Drive, giving flexibility to staff as necessary on those two items.
Second.
And that item passes 4-0. Congratulations if you're here. Moving on, there's no old business, new business, sign program permit, SPP 17-002 for the multi-tenant commercial building located at 34189 Pacific Coast Highway, the Riviera Building. Do we have a staff report?
Assistant Planner Nicholas Zornz will give the staff report.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Chairman McCann and fellow Commissioners. Tonight's topic will cover the establishment of a signed program for an existing commercial building known as Riviera within the Town Center area. This slide shows the project location. The subject property is located on Pacific Coast Highway just east of Golden Lantern, within the Town Center mixed-use area. Technical difficulties with the slides. This slide will show you the existing conditions and elevations of the Riviera Building, which currently has no permanent signage on site. The signed program proposes a total of two signs to be mounted along the north and west elevations of the building. I'll review each of these signs in more detail on the following slides. The signed program... Yes, catching up with us. The signed program was designed to provide all tenants visibility from westbound and eastbound traffic on Pacific Coast Highway. The subject building was one, has one eligible building frontage, being Pacific Coast Highway, which allows one square foot of sign area for each lineal foot of building frontage along a public right-of-way. Since the 94.54 square feet of proposed sign area is less than the eligible lineal building frontage totaling 105 feet, the signed program complies with the maximum area allowed of the building. The current rendering represents the proposed signage of the north elevation Pacific Coast Highway building frontage. The proposed signage is a combined wall-mounted center and tenant identification sign. The word Riviera, complemented with a blue butterfly logo, is to be individually mounted, halo-lit to the wall, which represents the center identification component of the proposed signage. Silver aluminum square tubes affixed to the building facade provide the method of attachment for each individual tenant identification plaque. Two blue-finished aluminum plaques will be mounted to the aluminum square tubes with stainless steel standoff and finished with white vinyl lettering. Each tenant will be allowed one non-illuminated sign plaque of 10.75 square feet on each proposed tenant identification sign. The signed copy on logos are specified to be white in color and to contain within the boundary of each individual plaque. The current rendering represents the proposed signage on the west elevation, provided by the approval of the proposed sign program. Alternative locations are allowed for tenant identification signage due to limited site visibility. Typically, tenant identification signage is located at the front entrance or building frontage or along a parking lot, which this is proposing it along the opposite side of parking. The building was originally constructed prior to Pacific Coast Highway having eastbound traffic. With the completed road construction, the site seeks to take advantage of eastbound traffic along Pacific Coast Highway. Signage along the west elevation allows the potential to capture additional visibility for tenants with limited or no visibility within this commercial center. Wall-mounted stainless steel LED proposed for overhead lighting of illumination of the individual tenant signs. And there will be no individually internally lit or illuminated tenant identification signs, only the sign component, which states Riviera, as the center identification. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed sign program would provide a visually attractive and consistent signage theme for the building. Additionally, all signage meets the area limitations of Section 9.37 of the Dana Point zoning code, which allows one square foot of sign area for each lineal foot of building frontage along a public right-of-way. The signage would constitute an enhancement to the overall building while providing signage opportunities for all tenants with limited visibility within the commercial center. Staff accordingly supports the proposed sign program and recommends approval of sign program 17-0002. Myself and the project applicant are present to respond to any questions the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, so one question, and I don't want to get in the weeds here, but I'm slightly concerned with the name of the ID, the center ID name relative to the sign program and what happens when they're super successful and they move on, you know, the business moves on. Does the center remain Riviera? Or does the owner of that center, can they change that, or do they have to come back to us? Do you know, would you know the answer to that?
So that was originally asked, actually before a formal submittal by the applicant's owner, and they did state that they intend on keeping it Riviera, even if they were to leave the site, as you're stating, as a tenant. They would potentially be able to propose a different name if it's within the same intent of what we're proposing of approval for the sign program.
Okay, so we are approving area as in a sense, we're not approving the...
Correct.
The design, other than the basic layout here. The area of that sign is really what we're talking about, and the name could change down the road.
Yes, especially if they're going to keep it within the same proposed sign area. It's just the name change.
Perfect. That was all I had? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Donner? Okay. I have no questions. Is this a public hearing? Do we take public comment?
This is not a public hearing. If someone here wishes to speak on it, it's generally a good idea to allow them to, but this is not a public hearing in the traditional sense.
Okay, thank you. And we don't have any speaker slips? Okay. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, so I think signage is absolutely critical. I live right up the street from here, not within the radius restriction, so I'm not in conflict. But I see tenants struggling along this highway, and they've struggled here forever, and the more we can get their names out in front of the public, the better off they'll be. So I'm fully supportive. This meets all the requirements of the code and look forward to seeing them flourish at this location. I'm in full support.
Thank you.
My question was, the sign program will provide regulations and guidelines for all new building signage. We already have a signage ordinance, so I'm not sure I understand what that means.
Staff?
So our sign ordinance only allows you to have up to two signs, and they wouldn't be the tenant identification signs. So when you exceed that, or if you exceed the threshold allowed under the sign ordinance, then the code gives you an option of a sign program. So typically, a sign program is used on a multi-tenant building, where you're going to have multiple tenants, and you want to ensure that the signage is consistent and is attractive and complements the architecture of the building. So in this case, it did trigger a sign program because of the number of tenant ID signs. So that's why a sign program is being brought before you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I think the sign program, or this particular sign program, is very well-designed and thought-through. I think it's very attractive. I agree with Commissioner Nelson's comments about supporting our businesses and helping people find where they're going or maybe identify places where they want to go that they haven't been before. So I'm in full support of this project. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the sign program permit, SPP 17-002, for the multi-tenant commercial building located at 34189 Pacific Coast Highway, the Riviera Building.
I'll second.
And that item passes. Congratulations. Thank you. Good. They normally do a great job, and everyone's happy with them, so. Thank you. Staff reports?
So I just wanted to let you know, at your next Planning Commission meeting, you will have a workshop in addition to some other agenda items, and it will be on Green Lantern. As you may or may not be aware, we have a number of hotel applications in on Green Lantern. You already heard one of them for the Wave Hotel. And as part of the outreach and the public process for the Wave Hotel, a number of the residents on Green Lantern have expressed some concerns. I'm actually meeting with them this Thursday to better understand and hear their concerns so that we can be better prepared at the workshop on the 28th, 26th, I believe, at your next meeting. And we're going to go over, generally high level, because we know that these projects will be coming before you in the future, but it's more of an opportunity for the public to engage and understand what's going on, talk about some of the traffic analysis that has been done. So LLG, the city's traffic consultant, will be in attendance to give a presentation and talk about some streetscape improvements that the city's envisioning for that area as well. So I just wanted to let you know to look forward to that, your next meeting.
What about the Wave Hotel? Isn't that with the Coastal Commission?
So that was...
We don't have any control over that at this point.
Correct. That was appealed to the Coastal Commission, and we're waiting for the de novo hearing to occur. We're told it should happen in April, but a date has not been set yet.
So this meeting about Green Lantern is related to the Wave Hotel?
Well, that was the first hotel project that became before all of you, but there are four other hotel applications in on Green Lantern. Yes.
Thank you. Will that workshop be starting at 6:00 or starting earlier?
We'll start at 6:00. Yes, regular time.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Nelson?
I like workshops, so I'm looking forward to the next meeting.
I'm already looking forward to it as well. I do have a question. A while back, I had requested that staff consider writing some kind of a well-worded explanation of view, view preservation or lack thereof relative to, you know, people come in, they get upset when they find out that someone's going to be building up. Have we worked on that at all? Do we need to do anything to advance that? Do we think it's a good idea? Can we calendar it for discussion next time?
We are working on that. We actually, when that direction was given, we're in the process of doing an update bulletin for the beach residents relative to their regulations. That was somewhat complex for a number of coastal and legal issues, so that was sent out about three, four weeks ago. Following that, we had a bluff top in the queue, so it's actually the next one on our list to put out, but it's very much on our radar, and will be coming out.
Fantastic, thank you. And I'm just looking forward to warming up a little and getting to summer and trolley time and stuff.
I just want to say we really enjoyed the Wales Parade.
I just want to say we really enjoyed the whales parade, even though with the weather, it wasn't how it's been in the past, but still a great time.
A business owner on Blue Lantern and Coast Highway mentioned that the project that's underway right now, the, I guess the Rain Tree project that's two stories down, he drives Coast Highway every day and said he's never had any problems. And normally, construction projects are a big traffic impediment. And so he wanted to compliment the city on a great job in controlling that construction project. Thought I'd pass that along.
Great. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting until the next one. Good night.